I want to welcome all the citizens of Portsmouth and my colleagues to our city council meeting. In accordance with Governor Ralph Northam's declaration of a state of emergency due to the novel coronavirus Executive Order fifty-one on March twelfth, twenty twenty, and the local declaration of emergency ratified by the Portsmouth City Council and due to the coronavirus pandemic which is continuing in the Commonwealth of Virginia. This called meeting of the Portsmouth City Council is being held by video conference on the eighth day of June twenty twenty-one without a quorum present in the city council chamber in order to reduce the likely spread of the coronavirus in accordance with City Council ordinance twenty twenty dash twenty-one and twenty twenty dash one zero two. Each council member is participating from their home or other remote location, and I am in the city council chamber. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Mister Barnes?
Present.
Mister Battle?
Here.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Here.
Mister Moody?
Here.
Doctor Whitaker?
Present.
Mister Woodard?
Here.
Mayor Glover?
Here.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Members of council, we have for our consideration the minutes of a virtual call meeting on May twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-one, a virtual regular meeting on May twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-one. Is there any discussion of the minutes? If not, we are in need of a motion and second.
Move adoption.
Move or approve. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir, Mister Barnes?
Yes.
Mister Battle?
Yes.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Yes.
Mister Moody?
Yes.
Doctor Whitaker?
Yes.
Mister Woodard?
Yes.
Mayor Glover?
Yes.
Madam Clerk, would you please read our speaker statement?
Yes, sir. City council rules require a limited up to five minutes to speak. While speakers have an opportunity to address council on matters of public concern, all comments should be made in a manner that respects the seriousness of the forum. It should not be made in a belligerent, sarcastic, or demeaning fashion. All remarks shall be directed to the city council as a body rather than to any particular member of city council, staff, or the audience, and should be limited to matters that only the Portsmouth City Council can influence. A speaker who fails to observe this basic rule of decorum will be deemed out of order and not allowed to conclude his or her comments.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And before we move into the public hearing section of our agenda, I want to take a moment to remind all of the citizens of Portsmouth and my colleagues that June is Gun Violence Awareness Month, and we're asking everyone to wear orange in support of gun violence awareness. The most important thing to know, though, is we lose too many of our citizens, our adults and our children, due to gun violence. It is a very serious issue that we must all work together to deal with to make a more safe community for us all. In addition to that, I would like to recognize someone on the front lines, Ms. Monica Atkins with seven-five-seven Stop the Violence. I want to recognize her for her positive contributions to end gun violence in Portsmouth and Hampton Roads. Thank you. We've now come to the public hearing portion of our agenda. Item twenty-one dash one sixty-nine. And item A, and Madam Clerk, would you please read the public hearing item?
Yes, sir. Uptown Trenton Walker of Pyramid Enterprises LLC requests the rezoning of twenty-two seventeen and twenty-two twenty-one Queen Streets from light industrial to multifamily urban residential URM to construct a single-family dwelling on the combined lots. The Bill One Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan recommends light industrial development. Planning Commission recommends approval.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Is the applicant present?
Yes, sir. Um, Mister Walker, are you on the line?
Uh, yes, ma'am. Hello, everyone.
Welcome, Mister Walker. Sure, you 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 have ten minutes, sir.
Uh, yes, um, my request is to rezone twenty-two seventeen and twenty-two twenty-one Queen Street um, from light industrial to URM, uh, which will allow um, my company to develop a um, a house there on that lot similar to what's in the neighborhood. Uh, right now, there is um, there's a lot of unwanted traffic in that area due to the lot being vacant. Um, we definitely see that the the new residents will be a home for someone uh, to come to Portsmouth as well as uh, clear up um, some of that traffic in that area due to the lot will no longer be an empty place for um, for for non-residents to to be in that area. Um, uh, we do look at this as a possible tax strain for the city as well. Uh, also, our ability to be able to uh, provide additional homes to the the Portland community in that area. Uh, so uh, looking for your consideration on making this change from a uh, from one zoning ordinance to another. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank, thank you, Mister Walker. Madam Clerk, are there any registered speakers? Thank you, ma'am. Hearing none, then this public hearing is now closed. Members of city council, are there, uh, do we have any discussion about this item? Seeing none and hearing none, then we are in need of a motion and a second?
Move or approve.
Second.
Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Mister Barnes?
Yes.
Mister Battle?
Yes.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Yes.
Mister Moody?
Yes.
Doctor Whitaker?
Yes.
Mister Woodard?
Yes.
Mayor Glover?
Yes.
This item is approved.
Next, we have item B. UP twenty-one dash one, excuse me, twenty-one dash zero nine. And Madam Clerk, please read the public hearing item.
Yes, sir. Uptown Alvin Keels of D and K Builders requests a use permit for a fifty-two unit townhouse development on approximately four point one acres of land located at eleven zero seven and ten twenty-one High Street in the neighborhood mixed-use zoning district with a proposed density of twelve point six-five dwelling units per acre. The future land use map of the Bill One Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan designates this area as a mixed-use corridor. The properties are owned by the Portsmouth Economic Development Authority. Planning Commission recommends approval with conditions.
I'm 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 present.
Is the applicant present, ma'am?
Yes, sir. Mister Keels is present.
Mister Keels?
Good evening, city. Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir. We can hear you, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Thank, thank you for being here, sir. Uh, you have ten minutes.
Thank you. Uh, good evening, city council. Uh, it's my pleasure to present my my concept to develop fifty-two townhomes located off of High Street, uh, in between High Street and King Street, um, formerly known as the uh, where the old Mary Jane Bakery uh, used to lie. And uh, my my plan for this site is to develop fifty-two contemporary, cutting-edge townhomes um, to bring added life to the downtown area of Portsmouth. Um, you know, my vision with this community is to uh, extend downtown um, to one day, you know, I want to bring more residential to downtown, but also to uh, bring some commercial life uh, to that part of downtown, and uh, that's the goal with this development. Uh, each unit will be about twenty-seven hundred square feet. Um, they'll have two-car garages, uh, four bedrooms, and uh, a a open deck on the third floor to uh, oversee the city. And so uh, this will be something different for Portsmouth. Um, you know, it's it's somewhat outside of the box, um, but I think it'll be great for the city and great for uh, the community, and it'll also add uh, to the tax role, uh, you know, with personal property taxes with uh, fifty-two homeowners um, in in this community. Um, I have also on the call, uh, my architect, who's here to discuss the project just a little bit, and then also my engineers, Rohart and Yor, to discuss any engineering questions. So I'm gonna turn it over to Tom Rettenauer uh, right now, and uh, and I'll be here for any further questions.
Thank you, Alvin. Uh, thank you, Mayor and City Council for allowing us to present this evening. I won't take too much time here, but uh, did want to point out a couple of things. I think your your planning staff actually said it very well about this project, so I'm just gonna state a couple of things that they actually said. Um, the intent of this project is really to extend the downtown pattern to the midtown area, which has actually been a goal for decades for the city. So this introduces a new type of housing that's not actually currently available in the city of having a unique roof deck area that allows people to enjoy the the urban environment uh, in a safe way. Um, as Alvin said, it's a it's a modern, fresh design, really, of a of a traditional brownstone. And so again, the use of materials and textures is of high quality. Um, it is close to the street again, as similar to a traditional brownstone kind of village, but really is gonna be something that's gonna be bringing a a different type of uh, homeowner that's still looking for something more modern and looking for more of a an outdoor entertaining area and outdoor space. Uh, so we're excited about this. So uh, thank you very much, and we're available for any questions.
Um, thank you, sir. Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, are there any registered speakers?
Yes, sir. The first speaker I have is Mister Mark Goddard-Giatrowski. And I'm not seeing him. Oh, he's here. Yes, sir.
Mister Yutrowski, welcome to our meeting, sir.
Thank you, Mister Mayor, council members, and other neighbors. Um, the brownstone, the brownstone developments, the brownstone housing sections are unique or were unique. Um, and they were designed to prevent uh, fires, which were the plagues of cities uh, for centuries. Um, they used non-flammable building materials uh, throughout so as to minimize the risk. I'm not certain what construction materials will be inside the frame of these of these structures, but I am concerned about the fire potential. And if if your uh, facilitator, your tech facilitator would flip back to PDF page sixteen, uh, I'm I'm wondering why the fire department had no comment on that particular aspect of the design. So essentially, what you have is a human-created canyon. And between the two roads of structures, the ones facing High Street and the ones facing King Street, you have a twenty-six-foot um, street or road or alley that kind of loops uh, from one side of King's, from King Street, then goes straight, and then comes back to King Street. The only event of a fire, this to me is a major cause for concern because the fire trucks would only have access, if if the fire were on the backside of the structure facing High Street or the backside of the one of the structures facing King Street, fire trucks would only have access through that alleyway. At the same time, the residents would only have egress for their vehicles from that very same street. And this to me looks like the potential for a disaster. Um, you know, there there may be some design features that reduce the risk of fire, which you can't completely eliminate flammable materials from a dwelling. You have mattresses, you have window treatments, um, you have carpets. So you you can't eradicate it. And I think there needs to be some sort of mitigation for this particular design flaw. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Madam Clerk, are there any other speakers?
Yes, sir. Mister Jack Claude?
Mister Claude, sir?
Hi, hi, this is Jack Claude. Um, I'm Mister Keels.
You have five minutes, sir.
All right, thank you. I can wrap it up in probably one. Uh, Mister you, Mister Keels Engineering Firm, Hogarth and Yor. Um, in response to the fire protection issue, normally, we design homes that have street frontage. In this particular case, each of these units has front, street frontage on the rear, street frontage on the front, and street frontage again on the rear. Um, so fire, fire apparatus will be able to respond to any fire on High Street, on the alley, and also on King Street. Um, these units actually have increased fire coverage. Uh, that's that's not a design flaw. Um, other than that, I don't really have much to add to to the previous speaker. If you need anything else, I'm standing by to answer any questions.
Thank you, sir. And Madam Clerk, are there any other speakers?
Yes, sir. Tony Goodwin?
Mister Goodwin, sir, are you here? I see you.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much, Mister Mayor. My
Sir?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Uh, my name is Tony Goodwin, reside in the Parkview section of the city, and thank you very much for the opportunity to speak tonight, as I did on the Planning Commission as well. Uh, Mister Keels, congratulations. This is a great opportunity for the development west of Effingham, which is something we and our family have been involved with for over thirty-plus years. So we're thankful that someone like yourself has taken the initiative to step off and 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 be another pioneer in in developing uh, these properties. Um, I would like to refer to, though, as the stakeholders and being here for a number of years and always being sold on the idea of uh, s- street-level frontage uh, along the High Street corridor, things that are, that is, we all know is a commerce uh, corridor. And one of the suggestions that I made back at the Planning Commission to you and your um, your architects and engineers was considering the possibility of incorporating some sort of legitimate commercial space on some of the, some of the units, not all of the units, but specifically corners, that would create office space and under the true definition of what we call live work in the industry, uh, where there's actually an office space or commercial space directly below the residential uh, space. That keeps the continuity of the commercial uh, corridor along High Street uh, co- basically as a commercial corridor, where not one side of the street is unbalanced from the other. That being a suggestion to to handicap accessible bathrooms on the first floor and so on and so forth. Uh, we have, we have perfect examples where there are voids in High Street which have caused disconnect, uh, such as the five-hundred block of High Street, where it disconnects from the four-hundred and the six-hundred block. And we have a lot of challenges just getting people to walk past the five-hundred block where the YMCA building and the Catholic Church are. So those are two examples right there of something you would like to consider. Also, something else, we were always sold on with um, with the Gendros Group and all of the consultants, over the years, we were always told, let's reconnect the city's street grid, which means that if you're looking at page seven on the map and you're packing there, Hatton and Primrose stop at High Street. We've always talked about how Hatton doesn't connect, Hatton Primrose doesn't connect to London, which creates a dead-end corridor and a place that hang, is a hangout. So in order to maybe possibly solve one of the little issues that is being discussed about access is create a grid back and connecting Hatton directly across High Street and Primrose directly across High Street towards uh, King. Because King Street is a twenty-six-foot wide street, and it is a one-way street. So encouraging all of the traffic to flow only on a one-way street to the project is probably going to create a lot of stress at the intersection of High and Chestnut, which is where we sit on our corner. But I would just like to say, if there was any consideration of uh, of council to to look into this matter as being just a simple flow and form and function of how the corridor works, that would be my my suggestion. And again, it's a suggestion to only help further along the development of of the commercial corridor along with residential, which is now being allowed into the, into that area. But once again, I'd like to say thank you very much for your willingness to to uh, to bring this project to to Portsmouth. I'm here to help as one of the stakeholders in the neighborhood, and I'm excited to see that your your willingness to take on such a project. So we're here to help.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
And Madam Clerk?
No, sir. You're muted, sir.
Having none, this public hearing is now closed. Members of council, is there any discussion about this item?
Mayor?
Uh, Councilwoman Lucas Burke, apologizing.
Great. Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Mister Keels, thank you for coming uh, forward to us with another um, fine project. Um, and I was combing through the applicant, application, um, and I saw that, I noticed there, there's two-car garages on some of the fifty-two unit um, apartments, um, but the parking for visitors or guests, um, how is the parking going to be aligned with this project? Uh, for uh, visitors and guests?
Alvin, you're muted. Uh, Ms. Burke, I'll I'll take that one as the architect. So the driveways for these units are actually uh, over forty feet deep, which allows you to fit actually four vehicles per driveway plus the two cars, the garage. So you can actually fit up to six vehicles at each unit.
Great. Thank you.
Councilman Moody, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor, and uh, thank you, Mister Keels, for the second uh, residential project that you've brought to Portsmouth. Uh, much appreciated. My question is, what uh, uh, can you describe uh, what these townhouses uh, uh, will sell for on average? Have you decided on what the price point is at this this point in time? And also, uh, uh, maybe describe some of the amenities uh, in these townhouses that would separate you from the competition out there? You you're still muted, Mister Keels. Tom, can you uh, can you answer that?
Yes, sir. So um, as most of us are aware right now, the construction industry is just going bonkers right now regards to cost. So what we're seeing now is actually prices for units are not being set until probably about two months before sale, just because these changes are just, really just changing how the whole environment is 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 worked with. Uh, and we're seeing price increases of thirty to forty thousand dollars per unit with all of the construction costs in there. So I I know Alvin's gonna try and be as cost competitive as possible with this, but it's almost impossible right now to say what the actual range is until we get further down the line with the design, fine-tune some of the elements that we have in there, and then you'd be able to get better pricing at that point. In regards to amenities, there really isn't gonna be anything like this in Portsmouth, having this third-floor deck. So there will be a third-floor outdoor area that opens to a media room, which then opens up to the master bedroom. So what this allows you to do is have an entire entertaining floor on the roof of this area, which then allows you to really get a hundred and eighty visuals uh, of downtown and throughout the Portsmouth area. So that's really gonna be something that no one else has at this point.
Very good. Do you think the inflation in the uh, lumber industry uh, could that in any way jeopardize the project?
I I don't think it's gonna jeopardize the project, but again, the prices have to be set, and uh, of course, they all have to appraise for a certain cost, too. So we'll be working with Alvin and his team to to make sure that they do appraise for the right prices and for the right market at that point.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
Is there any further, is there any further discussion from my colleagues on council? Seeing none, then we are, we're in need of a motion and a second.
Move adoption.
Second.
Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir, Mister Barnes?
Yes.
Mister Battle?
Yes.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Yes.
Mister Moody?
Yes.
Doctor Whitaker?
Yes.
Mister Woodard?
Yes.
Mayor Glover?
Yes.
This item is approved.
Thank you, sir.
Mister Whitaker? Yeah. Mayor Glover?
Yes.
We have now come to uh, item caption C. And this is going to be um, CA twenty-one dash zero one. And sir, would you please read the public hearing item?
And this is going to be um, CA twenty-one dash zero one. And sir, would you please read the public hearing item? And this is going to be um, CA twenty-one dash zero one.
Sounds like we had some feedback there. Okay. Yes, sir. Uh, citywide, the city of Portsmouth is proposing to amend City Code Chapter forty-point-two zoning ordinance to amend section forty-point-two dash three oh seven to expand the use of signs incorporating oper- automatic changeable copy to all zoning districts with the exception of uses under the residential use category to amend section forty-point-two dash three oh seven to allow outdoor advertising signs to have no more than two sign faces. To amend section forty-point-two dash five-three-five to allow an application for a special exception to authorize the modification of a non-conforming sign, excluding non-conforming outdoor advertising signs. To amend section forty-point-two dash five-thirty-three. To amend section 40.2 dash 533 to allow an application for a use permit to authorize the modification of a non-conforming outdoor advertising sign. And to amend section 40.2 dash 301 to require 1.5 off-street parking spaces per dwelling unit for multifamily dwellings. Planning Commission recommends approval.
Madam Clerk, is the applicant present?
Uh, the applicant is the city and that's Mr. Baldwin. And he is present.
And, uh, good evening, uh, Mayor Glover, Vice Mayor Barnes and members of city council. Um, uh, I want to talk you through the number of zoning code amendments we have before you. The primarily, primary, um, ones relate to automatic changeable copy signs. I think, uh, everyone's familiar with this, um, um, type of sign in which the, uh, the letters or graphics, um, changed. I think you've seen those and discussed those recently regarding some, uh, the proposed billboard out on Interstate 264. And these are becoming a much more common type of sign. We get a lot of calls for them, but the current zoning ordinance is pretty restrictive in the allowance of these automatic, uh, changeable copy signs. And so, um, we wanted to go through a process of, of modernizing our sign regulations to be more in keeping with most, um, um, signage types that people are, are moving towards today. Um, so the first thing we have before you on the automatic changeable copy signs, really getting a definition in place. And, uh, the slide you have before you here really shows you the definition. And that's really, you know, being able to change words, symbols, figures and images electronically. And again, I think you're all, um, familiar with those types of, those types of signs. The second part of that is, you know, where to allow these signs. And as you are aware, many of our, um, zoning districts are mixed use. Um, the, the current regulations on where we allow automatic, uh, changeable copy signs are, are somewhat restricted in the zoning category. And as we were taking a look at these signs, we realized, uh, just to give you an example, um, we're aware that, for example, the public schools are looking at automatic, uh, changeable signs in front of the school buildings. Most of those schools or in districts where they would currently not be permitted. Um, we also have a number of churches that have inquired about using them. Again, some of the church properties are not in these primarily commercial or industrial districts and they're not permitted there as well, uh, even though they're, they're very common. So also proposing to modify the, uh, the zoning districts where these are permitted to basically allow them everywhere, uh, except for where the primary uses are in our residential, um, category. So this would allow a much more expansive use of these automated or automatic changeable copy signs. Next slide. Um, second item we want to talk about a little bit. Again, I'm gonna go back to council's consideration of the, um, uh, billboard recently. So again, trying to update our zoning ordinance and get our definitions clear on what we're describing. These are two different types of signs, um, an off-premise sign and an outdoor, uh, advertising sign. And then the existing zoning ordinance is a little bit unclear, you know, what is what here? And so, you know, an off-premise sign would be basically a sign, um, for a product or service, um, being provided where the sign is not located, uh, in the same place where the service or, or item is being, um, provided. Uh, that's off-premises. That's clearly, you know, a sign that's not on the same premises. The other one, outdoor advertising signs, I think we're all, uh, familiar with billboards and that is, is what that is. So again, in this case, we want to get some clarity in the zoning ordinance that those two types of signs are clearly identifiable from each other. Uh, the fourth amendment you have there is that the, um, allows for more than two sign faces. Again, that is specifically a discussion city council had on the recent, um, use permit application on, uh, 264, where as you can see from this, uh, slide here, current regulations say it can only be oriented in one direction. And with this change, uh, we would allow the billboards to have, uh, two sign faces of front and back, which is pretty common. Um, and so we just want to make sure that our, our definition is consistent with that, with that opportunity. Next slide, please. Um, one other issue we're dealing with, um, and we get a number of calls about are, what we refer to are, uh, non-conforming signs. Um, you know, some of you are, um, I believe, aware of the 2015, um, US Supreme Court case, um, Reed versus Gilbert, Arizona, but, uh, ended up with the city being required to rewrite its entire sign regulations to comply with the guidance from the Supreme Court. And one of the, uh, uh, results of that and also of us, um, having changed our zoning ordinance a couple of times over the last, uh, 10 or 15 years is, um, a number of signs that are out there that were, you know, built in full compliance with the code at the time, but now they're, they're non-conforming under current regulations. And so, um, it's a little bit of a challenge when, uh, owners of these signs or businesses come in and want to, uh, modernize, improve, uh, their, uh, non-conforming sign. The way non-conformities work under zoning ordinance, the intent under non-conformity is to get rid of the non-conforming sign. Um, but because we believe there's just been so many created by these changes over the, uh, last number of years that we need a different approach to deal with non-conformities. And so what we're proposing is a special exception process. This would allow someone to apply to the Board of Zoning Appeals. This is not a variance, it's a special exception, uh, seller to what I consider like a minor use permit. And this would allow, um, someone to go to the Board of Zoning Appeals to get permission to, uh, uh, modify their, um, non-conforming signs. And this would include, um, um, you know, uh, a fairly sizable number of signs, I'd say we have in the city that have been, um, put into this non-conforming status. And it's, uh, one of those areas in which we'd like to have more options to assist these businesses and other, um, property users in getting their signs, um, updated and modernized without having to tear them down. Uh, next slide, please. So this next item we're talking about is a signage requiring a use permit, uh, under the current ordinance. When you have, uh, outdoor advertising signs, this is just had back in, uh, about a month or so ago, was a use permit requirement to create a new, um, uh, outdoor advertising sign. Well, we were talking about what happens here when you have, um, outdoor advertising signs that need to be replaced. In some cases, we have outdoor advertising signs that want to convert from, uh, sort of static, um, typical kind of sign to one of these changeable copy signs. And the other one, we might have a situation which we found more prevalent than you might imagine where we have, uh, non-conforming off-premises signs, even outdoor advertising signs that are located throughout the city, they're in non-conforming status. The owners of the billboards would like the opportunity to convert those to, um, or at least some of them, like the opportunity to convert them to, um, electronic changeable copy. And what we're proposing here is to take all of those, uh, types of signs and put them in the same use permit requirement that you would go through if you were establishing a, um, outdoor advertising sign with changeable copy as an, as a new sign. So it puts everybody on the same footing and it gives these, um, these older billboards, uh, an opportunity to come before city council and, uh, to make their case for, uh, allowing the, uh, their sign to be converted to electronic changeable copy. Next slide, please. Um, this is, again, what we're talking about here, this replacing, um, outdoor advertising signs. We've had a number of people contact the office in, in recent years, um, wanting either property to be rezoned or wanting, um, of creations of, of some sort of overlay districts, all sorts of, of, um, zoning techniques to try to find a way to make these, um, outdoor advertising signs be converted or a process for converting them. And again, uh, we're trying to make sure that the, uh, processes are consistent and for all applicants for these types of signs. And we believe the appropriate decision-making authority for these changes would be city council and therefore would be recommending, um, use permit. Next slide. And the last item we have for you in this group of, of, um, of code amendments, this is a minor one. Uh, we discovered after the, uh, zoning ordinance went into effect in February that the multifamily parking standard was inadvertently modified from what was in the, uh, prior code. Prior code had a standard of 1.5, um, parking spaces per dwelling unit. The current ordinance, uh, was unintentionally modified to the number two. And we don't believe that is appropriate, uh, level of parking for multifamily. And we want to, um, request the city council return the parking standard to the standard that was in effect before the zoning ordinance was, was amended. Uh, therefore, um, that would be a change from two parking space to 1.5 parking spaces per multifamily dwelling unit. And that only, uh, relates to multifamily housing projects and not single family. And that is the, um, list of code amendments we have before you. And I've kind of went through those, uh, relatively quickly. I hope you had a chance to look through the information on our staff report. And I'll explain those in a little bit more detail. But we believe this is a, an opportunity for the city to really modernize its sign opportunities for, for businesses and other users, um, as well. And, and, uh, uh, get our sign ordinance not only compliant with what the Supreme Court required us to do back in 2015, but also to get us in, in, you know, I think in line with what the modern sign industry is, um, uh, promoting, uh, under current, uh, under current times. And with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Dr. Whitaker, sir, you have the floor.
Uh, yes, uh, Mr. Baldwin, thank you for the information and presentation. Um, just a question on the, um, two sign faces. Any particular reason why, um, we find it necessary to put a limitation on the number of faces? Sign faces?
Um, yes, I think when you're dealing with these larger billboard type signs, these are the, these are every sign. These are, in this case, we're really talking about billboard type signs. They do have a tendency to be a traffic, um, distraction or a traffic hazard. They also take up, uh, quite a bit of space when you put more than two, two faces on them. This really allows you to do a front and a back, um, which is pretty much what the industry is requesting for these things. I will, I will mention there is, we've had one exception, um, um, for a three-sided sign. But generally speaking, this is the, um, the standard type of, of sign, a two-phase sign. Our current code, as, as you're aware, only allows the one. So this would again allow you to, instead of looking at the back frame of a single billboard type sign, to be able to have a, you know, sign on, on both sides. I think it's the way traffic moves and, and the, and the way they're attempting to advertise to dr- people driving by, really, uh, a two-sided sign is the, um, is the, is the most efficient way to do that.
Hmm. So is, so it's just that you think it would be a traffic hazard if it were more than two? I mean, is that basis?
Yes, I think it can become a traffic hazard. It can also become much more of a construction challenge to put that much sign face, um, sign face up these such, such large signs. Um, and, you know, with the one exception I mentioned, this is not a common request to have more than two sides on a, on one of these types of signs. Usually it's one or two.
So, so wouldn't the construction challenge, wouldn't that be an issue for the contractor to deal with versus the city?
Um, yes, sir. That would be ultimately, you know, the cities would be permitting the sign and, uh, but ultimately it would be the, um, the contractor's responsibility, um, to make sure they're building their sign, uh, in a, in a proper and safe manner.
Hmm. Yeah, right. So, um, I was just thinking, why would the city, if that's a contractor issue and that's for them, they want, they would have to get that approved anyway. So why would we want to limit it?
Yeah. Well, I would say this, um, in that regard, if, if, uh, city council were to concur with the notion of, of requiring use permits for all these signs, so you could take a look at them independently, instead of having that as a general standard to be automatically approved, I think that is something you could do. But I think you should look at these on a case-by-case basis based on their location. These are pretty sizable, uh, signs and they can have some impact on property owners around them.
Right. Okay. Um, and then the other, the second issue, the use permit requirement to authorize the modification of a non-conforming outdoor advertising sign. Um, what's the purpose of requiring a use permit there if it can be already approved within the code?
Okay. As I was mentioning, when you, um, these electronic changeable copy outdoor advertising signs, currently if you're doing new one, it would require you to get a use permit. Um, every new one requires a use permit. What we're basically saying, if you have an old billboard you've had in town for 20, 30 years and you want to convert it, you should go through the same process and let city council make the determination that that's now appropriate for electronic, uh, you know, changeable copy sign, automatic changeable copy sign as you, as people with a new one. This is, is a pretty significant change to go from a static billboard to a, um, automatic, uh, changeable copy sign. And so we think everyone should be following the same process for getting permitted, uh, by city council for those.
Hmm. Yeah.
Councilwoman Lucas Burke, ma'am, you have the floor.
Great. Thank, thank you, Mr. Baldwin. I always enjoy the presentations, so we learn a lot, uh, from, uh, your presentations. Um, and I guess my question was, um, that the city owns the property, but the, the developers, um, I guess are, are doing the sign. So if they have a, a static sign and they want to change to, um, uh, digital or changeable copy, um, does the city own that property? Who owns that, that piece of land parcel?
Yeah. This is, this is, uh, we're talking about signs on private property primarily. So you privately own sign on private property.
Okay, okay. Got it. That, that was, that was the confusion there.
Yeah, this is not a, this would not be a sign like in the right of way or something like that.
Right. Yeah, those, those, yeah, come, those still come to us for, uh, permit, um, use permit, uh, approvals as well though. Cause I know that there was one Adams Outdoor sign that was, um, I think Churchland area that was an old sign that wanted to go to a digital sign. So that would still come to us.
That is correct. They're, they're still out there looking. So that is one of the, um, signs we've been contacting about, but it's not the only one.
Right. Got it. Thank you.
Councilmember Woodard, sir, you have the floor.
Uh, thank you, man. How you doing there today, uh, Mr. Baldwin? Uh, I got a question about the off-premise signs. Uh, do we, do we, um, take on personal responsibility if, in case the business, uh, you know, go out of business, whatnot, do we have a cap on these off-premise signs? Uh, since we allowing them more?
Um, that's a great point. For the most part, we don't allow out, off-premise advertising. Other do we, we do have some of them. Um, and you do have cases where, you know, we're, we're trying to preserve the, uh, businesses' ability to use the signs they might have installed under a, a prior ordinance. But for the most part, we generally want you to advertise your product or service on your own property. Um, uh, I will, I will mention to council, you can imagine with these automatic changeable copy signs, that's a very difficult rule, even though, you know, it's a, it's an allowance to do that for someone because you can change the message on your sign instantaneously. And so it becomes a little bit more of a challenge to ensure that the only other advertising option would be, you know, something on-premise. But, uh, that's the way the rule works. And so we try to restrict people from putting up signs all over other people's property. Um, with the, the typical off-premises sign.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Dr. Whitaker, sir, you have the floor.
Yeah. So, Mr. Baldwin, within our code, uh, does it specify, um, the different dimensions and characteristics or qualities that a sign, um, must have or is limited by?
Yes, we do have standards for the different types of signs, um, including sign heights, um, sign errors, things of that nature.
Hmm. So, so if we already have standards in the code, as long as the sign meets the code, why would that have to come before city council for a use permit?
Okay, again, the ones-
It's an extra layer that would be unnecessary if it already fits within the code standards.
Okay. So this will be, you know, a question for city council. Um, obviously, you know, the, the, uh, the staff's, uh, recommendation would be for billboard type signs, these outdoor advertising larger signs, that they should have, uh, an additional layer of scrutiny because of their potential to impact the property owners around them or the, or the, uh, driving public around them as well. So, uh, from that regard, uh, use permit allows a higher level of, of review. And then for city council, they'll ultimately make a decision if they think they're in appropriate location for that type of sign. Whether, and that would, would again apply whether it was a, you know, a, a new proposed sign or something being proposed as a conversion. Because you have a number, again, if you drive around town, you see a number of billboards out there. You'd have to think about how far those are being, uh, converted to electronic signs. But, but the, that notion is, uh, for these billboard, uh, sized signs, uh, to come before city council. Certainly, you know, they could have a standard written in the ordinance to say if you meet these standards, um, you could be approved, uh, by the same token on these non-conforming signs. As an example, uh, city council could determine they would like them to automatically be allowed to convert. And that would, um, be something else we could address in the zoning ordinance. If that was city council's, uh, preference.
Um, yeah, it would, it would seem that, um, that, that already goes through, uh, what the permits department that would approve the permit for the sign to be modified or changed or built.
Right. Those are gonna come through the, um, zoning administrator's office in the planning department and also goes to the, um, permits and inspections for the, for the permit for construction.
Would that go before the planning commission?
Um, no, would not. If you do them without a use permit- Um, no, would not. If you do them without a use permit, that would be all administrative. If you put them into a use permit process, they would go before the planning commission before they came to city council. And as I mentioned on some of those other signs we were talking about, that special exception process, that's a faster process where council is basically allowing the board of zoning appeals to grant special exceptions for those signs.
And so if council were to take that extra layer out, this, the citizens would have an opportunity to, if, if they're denied, they could appeal to council, the denial of that permit by the department, at the department level.
Um, if you're talking about a sign comes in, and we go back, these are regulated under the zoning ordinance. So in the event someone comes in and proposes a sign that, that is denied because it doesn't meet the zoning ordinance requirements, their appeal is to the board of zoning appeals.
Right.
Then it goes from there to court, because it's a circuit court. It would not come to city council.
Okay, okay.
So the way they could use in front of city council would be through the use permit process.
Okay.
Any other questions for Mr. Baldwin? Do we have any registered speakers?
No, sir.
Then this public hearing is now closed? We're in need of a motion in a second?
Mr. Mayor?
Dr. Whitaker, sir, you have the floor.
The, the, the amendment issue I would just raise would be if council would consider, because of how technology changes, that limitation on the sign face, I think that that should be something that Mr. Baldwin, I think he mentioned, that it would require a special review versus just a straight-up denial.
Mr. Bow?
Um, yes, sir. Again, I think it, it all depends on the final language of the way the ordinance is drafted. You know, right now, the current ordinance has a limitation, again, these are those outdoor advertising signs, has a limitation of one side, one sign face. And in keeping with our discussion we had with city council on that prior billboard, we've modified that, that regulation to say two. We do think you need a standard, and, and so I think you're going to have to set a number. Again, based on the size of these signs, I think two is a good number. Another option you might have is to do have that, all of those signs are coming to the city council. I'll just say that those are all, when they're these outdoor advertising automatic changeable copy signs, those all require a use permit automatically. So the question is, do you want the code to restrict them to only ask for one or two sign faces? Or would city council want to be in a position to authorize more than two? And that can certainly be addressed. And again, as I would, as I would note, I would think again, that that should be left as part of a use permit process if you wanted to go above two. You're in the use permit process anyway, you could, you could, you know, make the, the, the number three, or there's a limit to how many sign faces you can put on one of these things, but you could allow additional number and just keep them in the use permit process. And then city council could deal with those on a case-by-case basis as they are proposed.
I, I, I think that just if we gave it the flexibility and let, let it do as you said, let council decide it on a case-by-case basis, it's not like, you said, it's not like there's a lot of requests coming through, so the limitation may be unnecessary. Also, a- also, when, when you have here residential use category, does that include urban residential?
This is, this is looking at the, the specific uses themselves, so this doesn't get into the zoning district. It just is talking about, like, not allowing somebody to put one of these in front of their house as an example. That's what we're getting at, not in a residential use. As opposed to regulating by district, we're just saying the residential uses should not be putting automatic changeable copy signs in front of their residence.
Okay, okay.
Are you done, sir?
Uh, yes, I don't, I don't know if you were going to take a consensus on whether that face sign change needs to be amended?
No, I, I, if it's the pleasure of council to take a consensus of it. Can I get a show of hands to have that particular part amended? Is there a desire for council to have it amended? Okay, we have two and assume the other five are not in agreement with the amendment, so go ahead and move into the question? Do we have a motion?
Move for approval of CA 2101.
We have a second. Second. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Battle?
Yes.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mr. Woodard?
Yes.
Mayor Glover?
Yes.
This item is approved.
We've now come to item caption D, CA 21 dash 02. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the public hearing item?
Yes, sir. Citywide, by request of city council, the city of Portsmouth is proposing to amend city code chapter forty point two, zoning ordinance section forty point two dash five thirty-three G and section forty point two dash five thirty-two G to reduce the requirement for two readings before city council for their approval of zoning text, zoning map, conditional zoning amendment applications, and use permit applications to one city council reading. Planning commission recommends approval.
Madam Clerk, are there any registered speakers for this item?
Yes, sir. Did you want a report from Mr. Baldwin on this?
Yes, I, I did. I'm sorry. Mr. Baldwin, could you please provide a report on this item?
Um, yes, and thank you again, Mayor Glover, Vice Mayor Barnes, and, and members of city council. This is a a relatively straightforward code amendment. As you're all aware, council's been looking to eliminate the two reading requirement for all these zoning applications that come before city council. The provision for that requirement is both in, I believe, chapter two of the city code as well as chapter forty point two, our zoning ordinance. And so to, to make that change, both sections of city code need to be amended. This is the amendment before you of the zoning ordinance, and ironically enough, has to go through two readings. This, in fact, just does what council has asked, which is to eliminate the second reading requirement for these items that go through the zoning review process.
Thank you, Mr. Baldwin. Our speaker is Mr. Mark Godoldik Yutrowski. And Mr. Yutrowski, you have five minutes.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Mayor, council members, and other neighbors. For the nearly twenty-five years that I've lived in Portsmouth, this ordinance in its pre-amended form has served us well. And in keeping with the concept of what isn't broken doesn't need to be fixed, I, I assert that this is not broken. Second chances are not always guaranteed in life. So when there are opportunities to have a second chance, an opportunity for further reflection, I think they are a very good thing to have, especially in government process. So in terms of citizen access, an item that comes before council on a particular meeting night, you may not have, despite your best efforts to alert the public, you may not have reached everybody who is a stakeholder in the matter that is being decided. And there may well be people who find out after the fact. So the current ordinance allows them to come in, not under a public hearing, but to sign up and make their views known and to bring their friends. The other advantage of the current scenario, and this, this I have witnessed personally over the almost twenty-five years that I've been here, is that council would find something on first reading that would require an alteration of the conditions as proposed that go with a particular change. And so by virtue of having a second hearing on it, the legal council has an opportunity to get the wording right or counsel to review it one more time before it is encoded and then to take action on it. So for these reasons, I believe that the, the ordinance is good as it is. What it costs you is a little more time in a meeting. Well, that's a large part of what we pay you for, your time in meetings. And in terms of somebody who is trying to get a project underway, a two-week a two-week timeout until the next meeting of council is a relatively small amount of time compared to what is allotted to many of these projects, some of which have been in progress for, for a year or more. So I believe for a relatively low cost in terms of time, we are affording citizens an opportunity to be heard and we are affording you an opportunity to make changes and ensure that they're the changes that you want when the language is finally adopted. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Godoldik Yutrowski. Dr. Whitaker, sir, you have the floor.
Yes, uh, really, the second reading only becomes an issue when someone is denied. If someone is approved, there's no need for a second reading, but I think we should at least keep it open for a first denial. And Mr. Baldwin might can elaborate on this. If, if a applicant in one of these categories is denied, what is the time period and cost would be involved with a resubmital?
Mr. Baldwin?
I'm gonna have a little, my own technical difficulties here. What happens when someone gets denied on a zoning matter, like a rezoning or a use permit? There's a one-year delay before they can come back if their application is similar to the one that was previously denied. So there is a one-year waiting period to come back and to basically request the same type of, of approval.
And they would have to go through that whole process again and pay the application fees and-
That's correct.
Right. Um, yeah, I, I would hope that, um, my colleagues on this issue that for denying that they'll be given a second reading. Because I have seen projects that were denied on the first reading and then approved on the second reading, because there was additional information and other issues took place. I think Holly Point is an example of that, that was denied on the first reading and it was approved on the second reading. And so just, just that consideration, the cost, the time issue, that I think we should allow it for a first denial.
Thank you, sir. Madam Clerk, are there any additional registered speakers?
No, sir.
Then this public hearing is now closed?
Mayor.
Councilmember Whitaker, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, ma'am. Yeah, I, I want to concur with Dr. Wood. I do see some value in keeping this second reading. I, I think over the course of these weeks, we, we all have been thinking about this process and in the back of your head, there are things that you may see potentially for, for this project if it's being denied, like if it's being denied, to concur with that. So, um, um, I think it's something that we, we should think about going forward. You know, just altering the process, more so than just eliminating entirely. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. C- Councilwoman Lucas Burke, and then Councilman Battle. Yes, ma'am, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, thank you, colleagues. For, I know the discussion came up when we had an issue that was a seven oh vote and, you know, we all were highly in favor of it. And, you know, I thought that, I raised a question, I believe the city attorney came on view and, and mentioned to us that we were one of the few cities that had a second reading on agenda items or permits or zoning changes when there was a seven oh vote. And of course, the only question would come into mind when there would be a denial or when it would be a, a split vote, something like a, a four-three. You know, where there would be some concerns for more information. So, you know, my concern for bringing it was all in favor of when we are all seven oh unanimously voting for an item, you know, or even a super majority. If we have a five-two, then, you know, of course, there would probably be no reason to come back for a second hearing. So I don't know how the language could be adjusted to say whether we have a reading or we don't have a reading. I know one time when the issue was denied for a project that went through an agenda item recently, city clerk asked us as a council, did we want to hear it again? And because it was denied and the majority said, no, we don't want to bring it back, you know, so I think that if we have that privilege or that opportunity to make that decision on whether we wanted to hear it a second time, we could make that decision at that point. But to have a seven oh reading or approval and then to come back for a second hearing is a waste of everybody's time, the applicant's time, our time, and the public, uh, citizens' time.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilmember Battle, sir, you have the floor. And then you, Councilmember Moody, sir?
No, sir, I'll defer to Councilman Moody.
Okay. Do you want me to come back to you, sir? Councilmember Battle, sir, would you like me to come back to you?
No, sir. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Moody, sir, you have the floor.
Well, I, I support items that have been approved. I don't think there's any need for those items to come back because there is a cost involved to the applicant. Time is money. Many cases, they gotta have an attorney come back, which is more money. And the, the delay and, and moving forward with their project. But I do support items that are denied coming back. Good example is the Holly Point project. I was one that actually changed my mind based on some input from citizens who made some excellent points on why it should be approved. I slept on it, came back and voted for approval. And that, and that, that project wouldn't be built today more than likely. So I think that's just one example, but I, I do, I would support items that are approved. And I don't think, if, if they're approved, it doesn't matter whether it's a four-three or what. I don't think you can stipulate that it's somebody coming back if it's greater than a four-three. If it's approved, it's approved, and I would support it not having to come back for that second reading.
Thank you, sir. Vice Mayor Barnes, sir, you have the floor.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not against the, the amendment as far as if it's disapproved. I, as long as we, I, I'm okay, a- as long as we can still have that option where we, you know, where we're asked if it wants to come back. if we wanted to come back as a council.
Thank you, sir. Are we all okay with our discussion? And then it's time to, we're in need of a motion, and it's, okay, Dr. Whitaker?
Did you, you think we should defer this to the next meeting so that you can get the proper language and the ordinance that'll reflect what it is we are asking? It seems like it's a consensus on the denial.
I would agree, sir, and that is a good point. So we've had, Counselmember Woodard, I'll get with you just after I make my comments. We've had a number of recommendations for consideration. And if we could have those put down in paper so that we can review them and then make an informed decision on which way to proceed, there is a consensus of council based on the responses, I believe, to do that. Madam Clerk?
Counselmembers, if I can just add, you will have a second reading on this item where the actual ordinance will be brought before you. If it's your wish to have the additional language put in there, simply that council will be given the opportunity to say whether you want a second reading or not on denial items, it's just a matter of adding that language to the ordinance. I would recommend that you approve this with the additional language being brought before you versus deferring it. You will have an opportunity to see the actual ordinance at your next meeting.
Counselman Woodard, sir, I know that you had your hand up, so you have the floor, sir.
Oh, thank you, ma'am. Well, with the input from Madam Clerk, you know, I think that is the correct device. But I don't want to neglect what Councilwoman Lisa Lucas Burke says. Well, we should consider a supermajority or unanimous decision based off of, you know, the projects that do come through. It should be something that we consider alongside the language of these second readings. It's something that we should consider.
So I just want to clarify, we're all in agreement then that we can move forward with the ordinance as written as the first reading, and then that information will be added for the second reading. Is that my understanding?
I think, Mr. Mayor, I think where the consensus, I think where the consensus was, was on a second reading being allowed for a denial.
Yes.
But not for the type of approval vote. I'm going to agree with Counselman Moody on that, that if it's approved, it's approved.
Yeah, that's fine.
Correct, correct, sir. And I appreciate you helping clarify that, absolutely. I think that's what we're all in agreement with. If it's approved, disapproved. But if it's a denial, then that presents an opportunity for a second reading. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Very well then. Are we in agreement with that then? Can I see a show of hands?
Yes. Move for approval.
Okay, so we are in need of a motion and a second, and we have that. So Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Mayor, just to make sure the record is clear, if you just move for approval, we just move for approval on what's written here.
Right.
That's right. That's correct.
Motion and move.
We already did that, yes.
I'm in my motion to move for approval with the additional language as for the denial process.
Second.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Yes, sir. Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Battle?
Yes.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mr. Woodard?
Yes.
Mayor Glover?
Yes.
This item is approved.
We have now come to the caption of unfinished business, and we have item twenty-one dash one-four-zero. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the ordinance we are considering for item C?
Yes, sir. Zoning Amendment Ordinance Z twenty-one zero-one.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Did our vote just make this unnecessary?
Not yet, sir.
Okay.
Not, not, not quite. Thank you, sir. So I will ask the question, because we do have some speakers for this item. Are we ready to vote on this item, or do we want to hear from the speakers?
Ready to vote.
I'm ready to vote.
Ready.
Okay. Thank you very much. So do we have a motion and a second?
We've adopted.
Move for approval. Second.
Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Barnes?
No.
Mr. Battle?
Yes.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
No.
Mr. Woodard?
Yes.
Mayor Glover?
Yes.
This item is adopted five-two.
We now have item D. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the resolution we are considering pertaining to this item?
Yes, sir. A resolution granting a use permit, U.P. twenty-one zero-six, to Economic Development Authority of the City of Portsmouth, Virginia to construct and operate a casino gaming establishment at thirty-six thirty Victory Boulevard.
Colleagues, we are in need of an emotion and a second.
Move for approval.
Second.
Madam Clerk, are you ready to call the roll?
Yes, sir. And just to be sure, council does not wish to hear the speakers.
Are we okay with foregoing the speakers, council colleagues?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Barnes?
No.
Mr. Battle?
Yes.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
No.
Mr. Woodard?
Yes.
Mayor Glover?
Yes.
This item is adopted five-two.
We've now come to item E. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the resolution we're considering pertaining to this item?
Yes, sir. A resolution granting a use permit, U.P. twenty-one zero-seven, to Economic Development Authority of the City of Portsmouth, Virginia to construct and operate a full-service hotel at thirty-six thirty Victory Boulevard.
Thank you, ma'am. Is it the pleasure of council to forego the speakers on this item?
Yes.
Yes.
Then we need a motion and a second.
We've adopted.
Second.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Mr. Barnes?
No.
Mr. Battle?
Yes.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
No.
Mr. Woodard?
Yes.
Mayor Glover?
Yes.
This item is adopted five-two.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We have now come to the city manager's report, item twenty-one dash one-seven-zero. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the ordinance we are considering pertaining to this item?
Yes, sir. An ordinance accepting community development block grant funding from the Department of Housing and Urban Development in the amount of twenty-three thousand, seven hundred, eighty-three dollars and appropriating said sum in the FY twenty-twenty-two Community Planning and Development Fund for use in implementing the annual action plan.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Were there any speakers for this item?
No, sir.
Council members, is there any discussion on this item? Move for approval. Madam Clerk, we need a motion, excuse me, council members, we need a motion and a second.
Move for approval.
Second.
Second.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Battle?
Yes.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mr. Woodard?
Yes.
Mayor Glover?
Yes. We have now come to an item twenty-one dash one-seven-one. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the ordinance we are considering?
Yes, sir. An ordinance to amend Section ten dash one zero-eight and Section ten dash one twelve of Chapter ten of the Code of the City of Portsmouth, Virginia to formally change the name of Voting Precinct Number twenty-five to Waterview Elementary School and to formally change the name of Voting Precinct Number twenty-nine to Manor High School.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Are there any speakers on this item, ma'am?
No, sir.
Is there any discussion from council, my council colleagues?
Ms. Mayor, just glad to see the name of Manor High School coming back.
Yay, me too. That's our high school, y'all.
Well, I will say on behalf of the Manor High School, congratulations.
I want to take a little credit for that because I was on the school board when that happened.
Saying your Greyhound's face.
Very well. So we are in need of a motion and a second.
Move for approval.
Second.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the Manor roll call?
Yes, sir. Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Battle?
Greyhound, yes.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Mustang, yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Oh, yes.
Mr. Woodard?
Greyhound, yes.
Mayor Glover?
Yes.
Can I amend my vote and say Greyhound, yes?
We have now come to item of new business, item twenty-one dash one-seventy-two. Boards and Commissions and Vice Mayor Barnes and Dr. Whitaker, are there any appointments bring forward for council's consideration?
Yes, we have three appointments. One is for the History Commission for Miss Mary McManus. The other one's for the Parks and Rec Commission, Kenneth Austin, who's the school rep. And the SPSA is Richard Underhill, who's the interim Public Utilities. He's replacing our former. I'll ask, we move that for approval.
Move for approval?
Second.
Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Battle?
Yes.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mr. Woodard?
Yes.
Mayor Glover?
Yes. Now I've come to item twenty-one dash one-seven-three, item submitted by council. And Madam Clerk, please read the ordinance we are considering pertaining to this item.
Yes, sir. An ordinance modifying ordinance twenty-twenty dash one oh-two, adopted on October thirteenth, twenty-twenty, and the emergency procedures established thereunder to ensure the continuity of local government during the COVID-nineteen pandemic and terminating the local declaration of emergency due to COVID-nineteen affected June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-one.
Madam Clerk, are there any speakers?
No, sir.
Any discussion from my colleagues on council? We have a motion and a second?
Move for approval.
Sir?
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Battle?
Yes.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mr. Woodard?
Yes.
Mayor Glover?
Yes. And Vice Mayor Barnes?
Yes. Yes, I wanted to make a motion for Ms. Deborah White to discuss some things. I'm sorry, a motion for Ms. Deborah White.
And do we have a second?
Well, there wasn't, what is the motion?
The motion, sir, was to approve the discussion we had for Ms. White.
I think you have to be specific.
Okay.
Yeah.
I want to make a motion, I'm sorry. I wanted to make a motion to approve the discussion that we had for Ms. Deborah White.
Sir, you have to be more specific what you're approving.
It's probably, it probably should be moved, ma'am, by one of you who made the recommendation.
I'll make the motion. I move that...
Very well, sir. You're right. Go ahead.
I move that we approve the discussion held relative to the increase and the evaluations for Ms. Deborah White.
A second.
Mayor?
Dr. Whitaker, sir, you have the floor.
The motion you're trying to make has to be specific to... You have to do that.
Okay. I move that we approve the additional two percent increase for Deborah White's performance evaluation.
Second.
Madam Clerk, are you ready to call the roll?
Before, Mr. Mayor?
Question?
Yeah.
Dr. Whitaker, sir, you have the floor.
Yes, I just want to make sure the public is clear on my vote. I'm going to be voting no. Ms. White has performed outstandingly. I think all of us on council support the work that she has done in her position as clerk. The vote of no has nothing to do with her performance. It's because if we're going to do a two percent pay increase for one employee and above the three percent that employees will be getting, just because that employee is an appointee does not justify the fact that we still should have had some benchmarks and procedures in place so that we're not acting arbitrarily with our discretion. And so I just want the public to be clear that this is not about Mrs. White's performance. It is purely about the procedure and the process that should take place before we start just making an arbitrary increase in pay because the issue comes up, how are you doing it for one but not for the other? And not just for today, but for future practices that this council will do. If council chooses to increase the pay for employees that do not report to us, we do that through the budget process by increasing the pay for all the employees. And so it's not for us to now circumvent that process because it is not an employee, it is an appointee. It should still have the same type of standard and criteria. And that's why I'm voting no because we did not follow any benchmark, any standard in suggesting a two percent increase.
Thank you, sir. Vice Mayor Barnes, sir, you have the floor. Then you, Counselmember Battle, sir.
And I just wanted to say, echo some of those sentiments. Ms. Deborah has done an excellent job, like I said, in the meetings. I worked with her before. I was on council, and she did an excellent job of handling things very well with myself. She's very knowledgeable of all the subjects that we need to talk about. And she also sometimes... Um, she's very knowledgeable of, of all the, the subjects that we need to talk about, and she also sometimes helps us run the meeting. But with that being said, for me, um, it's, it's about fairness, um, and we're giving everybody else the, the three percent raise. Um, I, I didn't wanna, um, give extra to one person without giving extra to everyone else. Um, you know, I, I, I think that we have, like I said in, in the, in the close meeting, I think we have some of the best staff in Hampton Roads, um, and, you know, I don't want them, um, to get the perception that we're treating anyone unfairly. Um, so that's the reason why I'm voting no, it has nothing to do with her performance, but everything to do with just making sure that we're fair across the board.
Thank you, sir, C- Councilman Battle, sir, you have the floor.
Let me explain to the citizens why I'm voting yes. First of all, as a council, we only hire poor folk and we evaluate those folk. We evaluate them for their performance and what incentives that we're gonna give them. The rest of the city employees are evaluated by their supervisors and the city manager, and therefore, it is their responsibility if they want to give them raises for their performance. But as the city council, we only give, uh, raises or evaluate poor folk. And she, this, the clerk has, is one of those folk. So therefore, we have the latitude, if the person is doing a wonderful job, to give them a raise. And all of the council unanimously said that this woman performed in an excellent manner in all phases of her job, even when she's not working twenty-four hours a day. Therefore, since we evaluate them and we have the latitude to give this individual a raise, we will not create an act of no one and give them, her an excellent rating and then not compensate her with a monetary value. So this is why I'm voting yes, and this is the true reason that I think that my colleagues have a misperception of who we evaluate and who we can and who we can't give raises. So I'm gonna vote yes to give her an extra two percent raging, raises, and the validity for it is her performance, which is unanimous, thank you.
Thank, thank you, sir, and if, if I may just add one, one last comment before we call for us, well, first of all, uh, Councilwoman Lucas Burke, ma'am, you have the floor.
I think Mr. Moody, uh, Councilman Moody had his hand before mine.
Oh, I, I apologize, okay, Councilmember Moody, sir, you have the floor.
I will vote, uh, to approve Deborah's, uh, two percent, uh, additional increase. You know, the public, uh, probably isn't aware, but, uh, she's on call twenty-four seven. Her job doesn't, uh, end at five o'clock. And, uh, she's, uh, she has seven bosses that are, uh, subject to contact her after hours. Uh, Deborah, uh, does a stellar job, uh, and, uh, I, I think, uh, that additional two percent is well-earned. And I'd like to publicly thank, uh, uh, Deborah White for the job that she's done for many, many years, uh, as the, uh, city clerk, uh, of Portsmouth.
Thank you, sir. Um, Co- Councilwoman Lucas Burke, yes, ma'am.
Thank you, sir, thank you, colleagues, for your discussion, um, yesterday and today. Uh, and, um, I did propose the additional two percent because I sit on the Virginia First Cities, uh, Board where the state is giving their employees a five percent increase, and because we, um, have the privilege and the opportunity to evaluate our four appointees, which is our city manager, our city attorney, our city clerk, and our city assessor, these are the only four employees that we have that we can add in our value or, or appreciation for what they do. And Deborah do come in at eight o'clock, she's there before eight o'clock, and she don't get to leave at five o'clock like our regular eight to five employees, she has to stay for city council meetings, she has to stay if somebody wants to rent out the city council chambers and, and we were doing that and we were wearing her out. And, uh, you know, she do have seven bosses that she have to answer to and, and she treats us all the same, whether she appreciates or approves of what we're coming with her with or not, she's a, a fair person, she's honest, she's stellar, she's superior, and I recommended the two percent because I think she deserves it. Women are always underappreciated, underpaid, underrecognized, and all of that. And if I get an opportunity to show my appreciation with a two percent, that's what I recommend it, and that's why I'm, uh, gonna be voting for this tonight.
Thank you, ma'am, and, and if I could make, make the last comment. When, when I think of our city clerk, Deborah White, I think of the consummate professional, someone who, whatever the weather in her life is, she is steady, she is competent, she is capable, and she performs at an extremely high level. The other thing I'd like to say to all of the citizens of Portsmouth, there is a process for evaluation, and each of us as council members had an opportunity to evaluate this wonderful employee. So let us be clear that we appreciate what Deborah White brings to us as a team. And more importantly, I want you to know as citizens, many of you have known Deborah for years, and you know what kind of professional she is, and I would say, as your mayor, during my transition this first six months, I could not have been successful, nor our council if it were not for the guidance of our clerk and her institutional knowledge and her concern and care of taking care of the people's business through her role. So I would vote yes seven times if I could, but I will definitely vote once, yes, thank you. And with that, did we already have a motion and a second?
Move adoption.
Second.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes, sir, Mr. Barnes.
No.
Mr. Battle.
Yes.
Mrs. Lucas Burke.
Yes.
Mr. Moody.
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker.
No.
Mr. Woodard.
No.
Mayor Glover.
Yes. We have now come to item twenty-one dash one seventy-four. Um, well, actually, there are a couple other items we need to cover, items submitted under council, um. Councilwoman Lucas Burke, did you have a couple items, um, to, to cover, ma'am?
I do, sir, um, I want to.
Please proceed.
Thank you, sir, thank you for the floor, um, we had our thirty, one hundred and thirty-seven commemorative uh, Memorial Day, uh, well, didn't have the parade, but we did have the laying of the memorial wreath, and I was just so excited just to, to know, you know, I'm on this woman kick tonight, so, you know, y'all bear with me, um, the spotlight on our military commanders, they were all women, first time ever in, in the history of the city of Portsmouth. We had the, uh, Laura Dickey, who is the rear admiral, uh, of the fifth district of the Coast Guard, she's the commander for the Coast Guard. We had Captain Lisa Mulligan, um, who is the commanding officer for the Naval Medical Center, and we have Captain Diane Wolfson, who is the commander of the Norfolk Naval Shipyard and a very good friend of my, uh, former shipmar- shipyard, uh, friend Lisa Downey Hood, I gave her a hug for her. Um, and then some other women, um, who have been recognized, we have to give kudos to our chief, uh, Manigot because he had made some promotions, the first ever African-American female captain in the fire department, uh, is, uh, Sharice Orton, and the first ever African-American female emergency management supervisor of the EMS S-two in the history of the emergency management division for the fire department, and that is Janice Lewis, and then we also have, uh, uh, well, those are, are it for them, but we've had some other women to serve, uh, in the prior, uh, but that has been a while, but, um, just kudos to all of these women who are representing us here in the city of Portsmouth, and also want to let you know, um, that there will be, uh, Sunset Thursdays are gonna be starting back up, so get ready for that. We all are excited about coming back together as a community, and, um, I'll be looking forward and enjoying you on July eighth for the raw jazz as our first group to, to be out there. And then also, our pavilion is opening back up with, with two concerts, uh, we have, uh, Earth, Wind &amp; Fire is gonna be there, you'll be able to get your tickets on June eleventh, and also, is it John Conick, um, is gonna be there, um, you can also get your tickets on June eleventh. So I think our community is ready and excited to get back and engaged, uh, with activities, uh, that are occurring, so I'll be looking to see you there because I'm gonna be at some of those events as well.
Thank you, thank you.
You muted, ma'am. You muted.
Um, Councilwoman, did you have one other item you wanted to mention?
Um, but I mean, about. Well, the Juneteenth holiday is on, uh, Friday, June eighteenth. Um, of, of course, some city, uh, events will be, uh, ceased, uh, for that day, so if you get an opportunity to get out and enjoy June eighteenth in any kind of way, put on your, uh, attire and, and represent our, our city, um, in those, uh, avenues.
Vice Mayor Barnes, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, sir, um, first, I just want to give a shout out to, um, Portsmouth Parks and Rec for opening the new, um, Welcome Center at the Sports Hall of Fame, uh, we attended the ribbon cutting on May twenty-eighth. Um, also, I want to give a shout out to Miss Elvira Johnson and Wilson Ward, Gospel, Gospel Civic League for the ribbon cutting ceremony for their new meditation garden on Saturday, this past Saturday. I'm also want to give a shout out to Mr. James Edwards and Melissa Peel for opening Miss Bertha's Place. Um, the mayor, myself, um, Councilman Wooder attended the ribbon cutting for this new house. Um, it's named after Mr. Edwards' mom, and it will be used to house single moms eighteen to thirty-five, their children, and pregnant women who are experiencing homelessness, poverty, or in a crisis. Um, today, um, I attended the Valor Awards, and we had two police officers recognized for their investigation abilities, um, their names were, um, Officer Gino Jackson and Chad Carrillo.
That's correct, sir.
Yeah, um, also, after that, I left to, um, to, um, a vaccination clinic, um, sponsored by, uh, Hampton University Mobile Health Unit and Maya Bryant, who owns Bryant's Event Unlimited, um, she did this in reference to her, um, mother dying, um, of COVID in December, and so she wanted to do, use this event to give back to the community and help save some people with, um, the vaccines. Um, lastly, I wanted to, um, let everyone know that the, um, Portsmouth, the Little League, Portsmouth Little League, um, All-Stars begins this weekend. Um, the games start on the twelfth, they will be hosted at Churchland. Uh, so I want to give a shout out to Churchland, Charles P., Cavill Manor, Olive Branch, and Wilps and All-Stars for participating, um, in that event. And then my last issue is regarding the grass again, um, I, I, I rolled past, um, Greenwood today specifically, and it, it looks like they, um, started on the grass, however, they, it, it was kind of like a, a bad job, they cut some, the, they cut the, some, some of it over here but left in the back, I mean, it's, it's still pretty bad, and I kind of been talking about this issue for, for about, um, almost two months now. And, you know, you know, and, and, and I'm sure you guys have probably seen more issues in the city, but it's, it's, it looks real bad, and I'm, I'm really tired of seeing it. Um, and, and I know if it was our citizens, by, by now, they would have had fines and penalties all against them. And, and, and they've been actually complaining about that, so uh, at, at this point, without them actually taking responsibility for their actions, because I know you said we put out information towards them, I think it's time to, to penalize them for it.
Well, can, if I can speak on that.
Yes, Madam City Manager.
Um, yes, we did look into that, that's, um, the property is the former Newport-Sandler property that is now owned by Cygnus, and as most of you may be aware, they have not been paying taxes, CDA fees, et cetera, for quite some time. In the case such as this, we have definitely contracted to have the grass cut, uh, we have levied fines against them. Unfortunately, when you're levying fines against an entity that's not paying, we have liens against the property. Um, we're doing all that we can, but to, to continue to cut, uh, we will do that, but that is an additional budget item that we have to absorb because at this point, there is no way for us to recover that cost until that issue is resolved.
What, for me, I don't know how the rest of the council feels, but if, if we're trying to, um, give a positive light on our city, I think that we need to, um, make sure that we at least beautify our city, and right now, that, it's been a eyesore, there's no telling what is in that grass over there, um, and, 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 and I don't want us, I, I, I just hate seeing it, because I go past it a lot myself.
We, and, and as staff, we totally agree with what you're saying, it's just one of those, um, gray areas where we're trying to find the best legal recourse, as well as financial recourse, to ensure that the city is not taking responsibility for private property. And in this case, um, we, we have more work to do because it, it's just been, as I understand it, this has been going on for a while.
Yeah, yeah. But the council, now, I, I believe that, uh, those parcels will be up for sale on tax lien suit this summer, and so hopefully they'll sell and, uh, the property will be taken care of, but, uh, it's up for a tax lien suit, I believe, sometime this summer.
Thank you, Mr. Moody, sir, you, you had your hand up, I'm sorry, I missed.
That, that, thank you, Mayor, uh, Mayor and colleagues, back in April, we received a letter from John Charette, who's the commander of Stonewall Camp, uh, three eighty, and, uh, in Mr. Charette's, uh, letter, he was asking us to consider following Norfolk's example on the disposition of the Confederate, our Confederate War Memorial. And as many of you know, Norfolk, uh, uh, moved their, uh, monument to Elmwood Cemetery. Uh, Mr. Charette, in his letter, went on to say that, uh, he would like to see ours uh, moved to Oak Grove Cemetery. Uh, he pointed out that, uh, there's space, uh, for it there, and, uh, right now, I think it's, uh, uh, it's stored somewhere in Portsmouth, I guess, uh, maybe in the Public Works area, I'm not certain. But, uh, I think his suggestion is a, a good suggestion, uh, to, uh, move it to the cemetery. If there's consensus, I would like to see staff come back with, uh, some plan on, on, uh, how to do that, uh, what the cost would be, uh, uh, if there are no objections.
Dr. Whitaker, sir, you, you have the floor.
Um, yes, um, that was proposed, um, I believe, back in two thousand fifteen, um, Mr. Moody, and, um, we went through a whole lot of unnecessary shenanigans over that, um, person ended up getting seriously harmed, uh, we could have, we could have done that. Um, at, at this point, I would like to see, first of all, just confirm again, who owns Oak Grove Cemetery, and then also, the cost of that, um, who would bear the cost at this point? Because when the opportunity was offered, uh, there was false information presented about ownership, um, there was a lot of, uh, propaganda put out incorrectly, um, and so, I, I think that. Um and so I I think that opportunity was there and now I would like to see what. The cost on the other side would be and is there some cost sharing involved with this?
Well, and and I think uh I I don't, I hear what you're saying. Uh uh I I recall that. I think it's time to look forward and and to the back. Uh that's why I ask uh. If if everyone's okay with it for staff to uh come back and just uh uh on the feasibility of doing that. And what the cost would be. And and at that point, we can discuss uh whether it's sharing, but you know. How that money would come about. I'm just, I'm just asking for uh some feedback uh from staff at this point.
Staff can definitely pull together feasibility study. At this point, I'm not sure what the condition of the monument is. Um so that will be a part of the feasibility study that we look at in terms and bring back in terms of cost and all of that.
Yeah, and I think they're talking about the uh the the remaining, the granite uh and and uh. Uh that part of it, I I think uh the the soldiers that were on it, uh I think those uh. Uh can't be reconditioned at this point, so I think they're just talking about erecting the 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 remnants uh of the granite. Uh part of the memorial.
Yes, sir. Um Councilmember Battle, sir, you have the floor.
I have the utmost respect for the Southern gen- gentleman. That fought in one of our most costly wars. Wars with their efforts were not to unite the country and to make it. A place that all folk are created and treated equal. And being one coming from one of the minority points where we weren't. Treated equal and we were in bondage. I considered a total insult to ask me to spend my tax dollars. To participate in any environment of traitors. And that's what they were, traitors. And they seek to destabilize a country in its embryonic stage. So although they have the utmost respect from me and mine. Don't ask me to worship them, especially to spend my money on them, my tax money. And any other minorities' tax monies to do any repieving. Any reviving of that ill-fated philosophy. That they carried and some folk in this day and time. Continue to perpetuate and then try to enforce on this beautiful country. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. So we 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 have gotten. Uh I think the response from our manager at least that there will be a a report back with a feasibility of. What can be, if anything, done, and we will have a discussion amongst ourselves about how we will. Proceed forward and in what direction.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I I don't know if there's a consensus on that. Um because. The the reason I'm saying is, um. As Councilman Battle just stated, and I I think that's a sentiment that is shared. Um across a wide span, especially considering what happened after January, on January the sixth. I would think that the group would be giving us some type of, instead of us spending our time. Doing a feasibility, if they want the monument and all they they ought, which they said was theirs, they claimed ownership. They they ought to present a budget of or or some type of proposal to us for. For moving it, and that's that's why I was asking whether that cemetery is city-owned or privately owned. Think all of that needs, you know, I. As far as the city's involvement in it, um I I think the removal of it. Spoke to the sentiments of what that monument represented and still represents today. And so if they want to do something with it, then they ought to be financed and then coming up. It shouldn't be tax or tax dollars. Uh supporting, trying to perpetuate a symbol of racism and terrorism. I I don't agree with that.
Certainly, sir, and and I certainly appreciate that. I I guess to my recollection, I'll just share with my recollection. Um the ownership was determined of the monument that the city did own the monument. We can verify that. But it was my recollection from our our previous attorney and Mr. Stromberg can speak to that, is that the city did own it. And and because it was city property, then whether or not we agree with its dispensation and how we will. Take care of it, um we still have unfinished business as it relates to that. And so and I think I think what what my colleague, our colleague was asking for is to have. Information brought forward so that we can begin to finish this business at hand.
Right.
Perhaps that's just a thought.
Yeah, and maybe Mr. Stromberg can inform council on it, not today, but. It's a follow research, but I thought under the guidelines that when those monuments were removed. The groups were supposed to make proposals to the city. Um and the city was supposed to give opportunities for those groups to make proposals for what. That monument could be used for before the city acted. And I don't know at that time period, but that's why I say I'd rather hear from the attorney, not tonight, but after he's done. The research on it, and I that's why I say I think it should be their investment and not the city.
I I I would agree with that, sir, and I I do recall that being part of the language, so let me, let me, let me. Um and uh recognize Mr. Moody, and then we will, we will ask the attorney to come back with some. Some information regarding that.
I would just add that we probably should uh see what uh. Out Norfolk uh uh handled the situation. I'm sure they followed the uh the legality of it and uh. You know, when theirs was moved to uh Elmwood Cemetery. Uh that that might give us some insight on how that came about, uh including the cost.
Sure.
I I think for Mr. Mayor, what Norfolk did is Norfolk, we have our own legal counsel. Um I'd really just hear back from our legal counsel on that.
Thank you, sir. Um Mr. Battle, sir, you have the floor.
If I recall, uh Mr. Danny Meeks uh volunteered to move it, so. I'm sure we could uh contact him and he'll probably move it wherever they want it moved.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Thank you for that recommendation. Um Attorney Stromberg, are are you prepared to. Report back with some information regarding this matter?
Absolutely.
Thank, thank you, sir. We will look forward to you report back at the next council um work session.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you all. Thank you all for that discussion. Before we go into the next item, a pending item for our city manager, there are few items I'd like to announce. Of course, Flag Day, June fourteenth. Uh don't forget to wave the American flag. We, last week, um our city staff, city volunteers and organizations participated in the Clean the Bay Day. We all convened over at City Park and our waste management team and everybody was there. Uh had a great time helping clean up the city of Portsmouth, and we look forward to continuing to do that uh as needed. The other thing I wanna mention is that City Hall did open yesterday on June the seventh. And we are so grateful to our city staff and all those who worked very hard to sanitize the building and make it. Ready for opening. In addition to that, I wanna thank our citizens for hanging in there with. City leadership, city government. This has been a tough, tough year for all of us. And we understand that many of you were unable to conduct the business with City Hall the way you were used to. And we look forward to meeting the needs of you in person once again. The only caveat I would add to that, if you haven't been vaccinated, of course, there is still a requirement that you mask up. When you enter the building, but we're all excited to service the needs of our citizens in person once again. Lastly, I wanna remind everyone that City Council. Our team will reconvene back in the council chamber on June twenty second. Uh we will have the work session and the regular council meeting in the council chamber. There will be protocols I know that will be addressed. Stay tuned for upcoming information to that end. But once again, we are excited about coming together once again as a team. In front of the citizens of Portsmouth to do the people's business, and we hope and pray that you all stay safe. And healthy throughout the process. Now we have come to item twenty-one dash one seven four. Um Ms. Jones, are there any pending items?
No pending items, no. But I do have um one thing I would like to share. I'm recognizing that the work sessions are an opportunity to ensure the council receives information. Um that you would like to hear about, like you that you would like to learn about what's going on. I with staff have developed a tentative list of work session topics. That I'll be sending to you this week to to get your feedback on the list, um to ensure that we're capturing those items. That you would like to find out additional information about, uh so your feedback is critical to ensure that we're providing you information. That you want to hear about and that that you're looking to to find out more, so stay tuned. I'll be sending that out. Uh sometime this week to make sure that we get your feedback.
Thank you, Madam City Manager.
Mr. Mayor.
Doctor Whitaker, sir, you have the floor.
Yes, sir. Um as far as report back items for the uh city manager, we um. Were looking to get report backs on um the American Rescue Plan Act funds, how how those funds. Uh maybe used. Um also, uh the status of us having virtual and in-person meetings. Once we come back on the twenty-second, um the disparity study, um that's supposed to be updated. And um interested in finding out as well as with that disparity study update. A status report on our minority contracting before that update. Um with reports from the department as well as our point teams um should. Be bringing us up on their minority contracting that they have done. And then the last item is SIPSA. Um that's that's a major issue that um we're gonna have to deal with the trash. And so those are four big report back items that. Um are we gonna get that uh for our next meeting or is there any timeline on these things?
Yes, actually, those will be on the list for the tentative work sessions because they are very, you know. Big items and we wanna make sure that we spend the time we need getting the directions, so um. Two of those are scheduled for uh in August. We we hope to bring uh two of those back, the. I wanna say the disparity study and um there's another one. I can't think of it now, but it they will be coming back. Um we will, you will have those on the list.
Now, the virtual versus in-person meeting issue.
That that's some, yeah, that I wanted to report on that. Staff is working to prepare a set of recommendations uh for consideration. To address the functionality of a remote atmosphere for public engagement. Uh numerous components will be incorporated into that, such as operational, technological, and legal. Ensuring all features can be addressed for your consideration.
Will we have that before our twenty-second meeting since that's when we're supposed to go back live?
Um hopefully, um we should have that. I was told about a couple of weeks to try to pull that together, um but we will definitely try to get it as soon as possible. And given our infrastructure, I I think that there will be some um. Infrastructure needs that we will have to address before we can do that in a in a smooth manner, but we we will present options from. The bare minimum to the complex, and so that you will have that to to review. And I'll try to get that out before the next meeting, so that that we will have that information.
Thank you.
Councilman Battle, sir, you have the floor.
Yes, in all fairness to our new city manager, uh there were procedures in place before she got here. And one of them is that we subbed out a lot of the grass cutting situation. And uh I want our city to look well, good as well. But um I'm sure once she's here for a minute and and understand the um. Uh time involved in these contracting, the 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 grass out. She'll be able to put together an expedited fast track situation. Where she'll be able to keep up with the obligations of the grass growth. So I make, I wanted to make sure that I made the citizens aware that it was nothing. That it had to do with you, you knew. The system was put in place before you got here. You'll over overlook it and make the changes necessary to meet the obligations.
Thank you.
Councilmember Woodard and then uh Councilmember Moody.
Uh thank you, Mayor. I I didn't know Doctor Whitaker said anything, but is uh this is for the city manager. How you doing, Ms. Jones? All right, all right. Um is are we getting an update or a report back based on our um our uh field houses and turf fields?
Yes, that report is scheduled to come back in August.
In August?
Yes, that's what we committed to, that we would bring it back in August.
Okay, um from my understanding, I thought we supposed to go ahead and get started on this particular project.
And when you say particular project, I'm not sure I follow which.
Just the turf field in general.
We are starting in terms of looking at what the costs are. We've hired a consultant to do a feasibility study to determine. Um what we're going to do first and foremost. We're working with the schools to identify all the the. The improvements that they're looking at so that we can have a complete picture before we start. Um implementing the changes directly related to the turf, because we don't wanna disrupt. Any plans that the schools may have and have to pull out bleachers or. Re uh move fencing because we didn't take into consideration the entire scope of the project. So we need to do that first before we can begin the implementation of the the high priority, which is to redo the uh the fields. And the ex- extend or add the additional lanes at Norcom and. All of that needs to be a part of the the comprehensive feasibility study, so that we're ensuring that we're maximizing our. Resources and not having to redo projects.
So if the study comes back in August, potentially this project will be pushed back the next year.
Well, the the whole point was to get the costs so that then we could come back to the council to. To get the next steps in terms of how do we move forward and make recommendations as to where the funding is coming from. Because at thi- this point, there's been no funding identified for the construction piece. We have funding for the feasibility study. But we do not have the construction piece identified as of yet.
When when you, oh, I'm sorry. Oh, no, 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 go on, go on, sorry. You got the floor. Yeah, we gotta wait for the mayor.
The Order of Things, Mr. Moody is next and then and then then you are Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh do we have a report back yet on the uh. Uh impact delaying the water sewer stormwater fees, uh the increases for six months?
Yes, that was sent out uh yesterday, I believe.
Okay, I missed that, but uh can can we share that publicly?
Yes, the to delay the, and I'm going off of of memory here, so let me, let me make sure I'm making it accurate. To delay the um water and sewer, I think that's gonna cost about one million dollars. And we would have to find the offsetting um decrease in expenses. Um for the stormwater rate increase, that's about three hundred thousand dollars, and we would have to find. The uh decrease in expenses for that as well, and then the council would have to amend the budget. To allow for that to occur. So we're talking about one point one million plus another three hundred thousand, so. So we're talking about one point one million plus another three hundred thousand, so one point four million dollars.
To delay all three for six months?
To delay all three for six months.
Is there any discussion, uh, on that?
Uh, are you looking for me for discussion?
No, no, my colleagues. You've done your part. Thanks for the feedback, uh.
Uh, uh, i- is, is there any further discussion on that matter, uh, with the colleagues on council?
Well, I still support it because we, we're still in the pandemic. Uh, people are still hurting financially in our city. Uh, our, our, our city's got, uh, a lot of federal money coming in, uh, funneling in, uh, to us. Unfortunately, not all of our citizens, uh, are able to tap into the, uh, uh, the, you know, the COVID stimulus money or, or even the, uh, unemployment. So we, we have a lot of people that's still hurting out there. So even if we can't do all three of those, uh, certainly the, uh, uh, you know, delaying the water increase would, would certainly be a help. But, uh, uh, perhaps we can discuss it further at a, a work session.
Yeah, I think that, that would probably, I'm sorry, Mr. Moody.
No, that, that was my recommendation, uh, that we discuss it, uh, at our work session on the twenty second.
And, uh, just to be clear, what would we be discussing at, at the work session on the twenty second?
Well, uh, uh, to, to land, uh, if not all three, uh, certainly, uh, uh, perhaps the water increase at that time. Discussing the feasibility is what I'm talking about.
Miss, Councilwoman.
Council, Councilwoman Lucas Burke?
Yes, yes, thank you. Uh, a- as I mentioned in, um, our liaison reports, uh, with the Virginia First Cities, I attended that meeting on June fourth, uh, was last Friday. Um, it was a three-hour meeting and, uh, we had Jim Regenbaugh, who is the fiscal officer for Virginia First Cities, that he did mention that we are going to get the American Rescue Plan, uh, information and some of the recommended uses. Um, I know that they're going to give us, uh, you'll have a presentation on that. Um, but the uses of the local relief funds, uh, for the, uh, ARP, uh, was to respond to the public health emergency with respect to the COVID nineteen or its negative economic impacts. Uh, cybersecurity, climate change resilient, uh, resilience projects, clean water, um, state revolving fund, broadband fiber optic projects, and I would think that the responding to the public health emergency would fall under that if we're going to look at that as an option for one of the avenues where we could use, uh, some of that funding, uh, to, to do the offset or to, uh, pad our budgets. And of course, um, I did mention that the city, uh, public schools was getting forty-six thousand, but the city of Portsmouth.
Million.
Million, I'm sorry, millions, yes. Uh, and the city of Portsmouth is getting fifty-six million, uh, eight forty-two, five hundred sixty-four dollars, uh, based on our population. Um, so, um, in our discussion, you know, we can take a look at, you know, um, how those, um, monies will be allocated, but um, definitely a responding to the public health emergency, uh, relative to COVID nineteen um, is an issue where our citizens are still suffering, uh, from the pandemic loss of income. We're trying to get our restaurants back online, um, trying to get staffing back up to par for so many uh, of our businesses and, and just trying to get everybody back into, um, the normality of, of living, um, and being. Uh, so I would welcome the discussion on that and share any notes. I do have a PowerPoint um, that they presented to me with more information too that I could share, uh, with the body, uh, to, uh, with the, with the council, um, in order to, uh, get more insight on how that funding will come and, and be allocated. And also did forget to mention that during that meeting, um, I was appointed as the vice chair of, uh, Virginia First Cities, uh, and, and Andreas, um, from the city of Richmond is the new chair.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Vice Mayor Barnes?
Thank you, sir. Um, to go back to, um, our city manager and Councilman Wood, um, Woodard's, um, question regarding the, the field house and the turf field. Um, I remember, and, and, and I'll go back and look at the meeting again, but I remember when we discussed that, that was a separate issue from being presented as far as the recreation, um, that was supposed to be presented in August. Um, and also I remember, um, from our, um, meeting with our liaison meeting with the school board, we talked about doing that more expeditiously and, 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 and to go back to your point as it pertains to, we don't want to, uh, have any scheduling issues. Um, I, I think, um, that, that was one of the other reasons because, um, their season does start around um, September, October, um, and we, we wanted to get a, a more immediate um, estimate and cost as it pertains to all of those things opposed to waiting till August. Um, and then having to push everything through next year. Uh, a- and also, um, you said we haven't identified construction costs. Can you clarify that for me?
Yes, what, what we discussed during the budget process was doing a comprehensive review of facilities. Uh, looking at fast-tracking the sports fields and the field houses separately from the overall comprehensive facility study. With that, we said that we would look at the total cost of the project and ensure that we were capturing all that would be necessary to do everything to, um, increase the number of lanes at Norcom, to, uh, increase the number of fields at the Charles Peak, um, facility. And we would come back to the council once those costs have been identified to determine next steps. And then, and next steps would be identifying the funding that we would use to construct those improvements.
Um, so, so to go back with what you, what you just said, um, I, if I remember the, the conversation, we were talking about recreation facilities as far as, because we mentioned Cavill Manor.
Mm-hmm.
Talked about Charles Peak and all that, but as, as far as the school, we didn't talk about that as a holistic thing together. And also, um, if I remember correctly, um, we, we were told that the funding was identified to redo, um, to do the schools project. Um, that was something that we, we, we did talk about, um, a- a- and I thought it was reflected in the, in the CIP and when it changed and when we voted.
Well, a- and again, I was extremely new during that conversation, so I could have something, um, off, but I, I did try to take meticulous notes. Um, the discussion around the construction costs, the only funding source that was identified was money that had been previously budgeted for the fire station. But nothing was determined. There was no vote, there was no direction that we were going to use that funding because we did not have a cost at the time we were discussing it. So in order to approve a budget, we would have had to have total costs and, and we did not have total costs at the time we were discussing. Either the field houses, the turf fields for the city or for the schools. We had no total costs at that point.
Uh, uh, the, the conversation I had, we had, I, 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 I remember that we said, we, uh, we did have identified a source for the school CIP project as far as that particular project. Um, we, we did not discuss it as it pertains to recreation with it. Um, and, and, and I remember vividly that we, we said we had identified a cost for that. We, we also, we, we talked about that in the liaison meeting and we talked about it, um, publicly. Um, I'm, I'm gonna go back and look at that meeting again, but I, I remember we said we identified a cost.
Thank you, sir.
A, um, a financial source.
Okay, thank, thank, thank you. Mr. Battle, sir, you have the floor.
No one wants the field house and the turf and the, the different items. I see more, Norcom more than I do. But the bottom line is, no matter what we discuss, the reality of it is that we only had monies in the budget to get the study. Now, I'm sure, and I'm gonna be gung ho in finding the funding once this is, this has happened. But even if we did discuss, that even if you do go back, the budget's in place. It, it has no, no, no bearing. And, and this lady just got here and she's in the beginning stages of, you know, getting along, so she's explained that we're doing the study and that's what we have funding for. And we can't change that unless we go back and do an agenda and find the money. But as soon as she gets that studied, we're gonna find the money. The money's there. I know it's there. So, so it, it, it's okay if you want to go back, but what does it change? It creates confusion. The reality of here now is that we're doing the study. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Woodard, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, man. Well, 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 the reality was this project supposed to have been done in phases. We've been phasing everything else that comes through Portsmouth, you know, so this supposed to have been done in phases. So my thing is, if the turf, the turf was the, the initial, uh, um, um, issue of getting done, you know, I know we're talking about the field houses as well, but the, the turf field supposed to be in play. Th- th- this is, this is, this conversation happened. Okay, thi- this is not something that we, we were making up as a council. A lot of people on this council agreed with it as well. It's supposed to be done in phases. So for us to, to lump up a study to figure out what we got to do for a turf field and a field house and, and road improvements, that was an initial conversation. If the field itself can get started on and, and the kids can have something to look for, the city can have something to look for. We already see in the coming weeks, we're looking at crime increase more and more and more. If we can't have some, we can't deliver something by the fall, you know, we, we fell in the city because that was the, that was the, the medium that we all acc- um, agree with. At least that field could get done. So we can sit here and act like this never happened or people talking crazy or making up things. That, that's, 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 that's not right, okay? Be- because that field supposed to be in motion and the study don't supposed to come out as late as August and the cities, the city, I mean, I'm sorry, the, uh, the schools gonna be starting their fall and their, their, uh, yeah, their fall sports and they're not gonna be able to use. So my thing is this is something that the city needs. It, it's gonna create a, a morale we open up and, and, and the kids can have something to enjoy and hopefully we can direct some of this, this negative energy into some positive energy.
Ms., Mr. Battle.
I don't, I don't.
I'm sorry, Mr. Battle, sir, you, you have the floor.
I, I don't have. I don't have any negative energy. You're not understanding that I want what you want more than you want it. But you don't understand that that one thing you're talking about.
Mr. Battle, I was talking about the kids. I was just talking about the kids and it's just the overall city itself. That's it.
Uh, no, but I'm saying that doesn't equate to the success or the failure of a total city. And, and, and maybe we need to, uh, get with the city manager at another time and discuss such matters. I think we'll do a better job, you know, if we carry this to a meeting after this meeting, uh, with the city manager. Thank you.
Thank, thank, thank you for that recommendation, sir, and I think that we've covered this matter quite a bit tonight. Um, there's not anything that we're gonna resolve in this meeting tonight. Um, I think that the, the, the ask of going forward and getting the information from the manager is appropriate. So, um, I would like to move on, uh, because we still have non-agenda speakers to, to, to hear from. And so with that, we're, we're at item twenty-one dash one seventy-five. Non-agenda speakers and Madam Clerk, do we have any non-agenda speakers?
The non-agenda speakers have left the meeting, sir.
They have left the meeting?
Leave it on pause.
Then since, since we no longer have any non-agenda speakers, our council members seeing no additional business for our consideration, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Good night.